Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are gathered to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time for public comment prior to our action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure that our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information, it can be summarized in three minutes. Please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. All right, do we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
A motion.
Motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben. Is there any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close note. This order. This evening, we have, first of all, on the agenda, a special presentation to our superintendent. This is an award being presented by People Incorporated. So I'm going to tell you who People Incorporated is, and then we're going to hear from them. People Incorporated is a nonprofit community action agency that serves 16 cities and counties in Virginia with over 30 programs designed to change lives for the better and improve communities. People Inc. focuses on offering business loans, small business training, housing services, and free income tax prep to community members in Rappahannock County. Brian Pitts is the president and CEO. He'll be presenting a Dr. Grinsley Award tonight, and your company with Rachel Fogg, the director of communications. Mr. Pitts, you have it.
Thank you so much, Chair Melsom. Thanks for having us this evening. It's been a beautiful evening. As was mentioned, I'm Brian Pitts, president and CEO of People Incorporated. We serve 16 counties and cities throughout the state of Virginia. We are a community action agency that has actually been in existence since 1964. So we have a long history of providing a variety of services to residents throughout Virginia. In 1964, we were started in a very small community in Washington County, very much like Rappahannock County. And since then, it's grown to offer a wide variety of assistive services to individual plaintiffs that are experiencing poverty. Our Board of Directors, which is 48 member Board of Directors, so Dr. Grinsley, I understand you're the challenge with serving such a large board. And just for your information, Rappahannock County is represented by our board by Gail Groves, the department of social services director here in Rappahannock County. But each year, we award two awards to outstanding community members within our service area. The first of those is the Fountain Thelma Henderson Award, which is awarded to an outstanding volunteer that works to provide services for the people we care about, individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And just today, for your information, we visited with Dr. Lang of the Rappahannock Food Bank, who was the recipient of our Henderson Award. It's my pleasure to appear before you tonight to award Dr. Grinsley with our Garland Thayer Award, which is named for our first executive director in People Incorporated's history. And that award is reserved for persons, as a part of their job, who provide outstanding services to low-income children and families within our service area. One of People Incorporated's core values is to really consider people first, to understand that no matter whether they're our clients or our partners within the community, that they are indeed people first. And frankly, we were inspired by Dr. Grinsley's work to really focus on delivering additional services and resources for disadvantaged community members here. Your work during the pandemic and ensuring that resources were available to all children in Rappahannock County was something that we found to be very inspiring. So again, it's my pleasure to mention Dr. Grinsley as the 2022 Garland Thayer Award winner by People Incorporated in Virginia.
Good. Thanks for the vision. [applause] [inaudible] I'm still a little spry. I'll just have a cap for the moment. Here, I guess. Sorry. Can we smile? [applause] Please take steps.
You certainly made a good choice.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, Mr. Pitts, and the spoke. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I think she's decided to accept you.
I hope so.
She's basically...
Never happened.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Anything anybody wants to say before we move on? Anybody? No? Are we good? Moving on to donations.
Virginia Rise and Henry Shackleford donated $995.48 for student tickets to state basketball and volleyball games. Tucker Jenkins donated $500 for basketball. And Rose Hill donated $500 to the FFA.
Thank you.
Amazing.
And those will be accepted during our consent agenda. Moving on to 2.7, is there a motion to adopt our minutes for the June 13 board meeting and our June 20 retreat?
Sure.
We had motion, Mr. Uben. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? I want to thank Mr. Grove for hosting the retreat, even though we had no electricity.
No. We had a generator.
We had to move up the hill to a building that had a generator powering some lights so that we could continue. But it was a strange night in Woodville. Appreciate it. All in favor of adopting the minutes? Looking, I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, close note. This order. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to read the bills?
I did. We're just beginning, so we're just right where we're supposed to be with 99% of everything.
That's right. Our fiscal year just started, July 1st, so...
So we haven't spent a lot in Texas.
We have. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
We have a motion from Ms. Bonham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Uben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close note. This order. Dr. Grinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mills, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first report of the superintendent is the notification of meal pricing for school year. I'm just going to pull up some of these tabs. This way. So I'm sure, as you've read and as you are aware, that based on our eligibility for the CEP program, the Community Eligibility Program, for the school year 23, '24, our elementary students will now be eligible to receive free breakfast and lunch regardless of status of...
Every kid.
Every kid.
Every kid.
Yes. So we're thrilled about that, especially considering what we have been seeing with the school lunch debt accumulating. We held the breakfast and lunch at the high school the same. The adult breakfast and lunch did have to increase a little bit, and that's part of the CEP requirements to meet those rates.
Still a few.
But still a great deal.
20 years ago, we used to figure out what the lunch price was going to be. I mean, just so you know, 20 years ago, we used to figure that out. Today, we do what they tell us. Pretty much.
Yeah, you have some flexibility for pricing à la carte items and extras and things like that. But for the most part, we know very well that we want to keep our kids well-fed with nutritious breakfast and lunch. They learn so much better when they have full tuns.
So do high school kids.
Yes, they do. They do. And this year, we're changing that up a little bit. We are bringing back breakfast after the bell. So a lot of data and research does show that high school students tend to want to eat later, a little later in the morning. The current breakfast time that they have early in the morning just doesn't seem to inspire them to eat. They're rushing to get to where they need to go. So yes, we're excited about that. We've had great success with that in the past, and it also helps boost up our cafeteria quite a bit.
So what would create a situation where high school kids can get lunch and breakfast as well as elementary kids?
Okay, so for CEP eligibility, the primary driver of that is your poverty and economic situation in the school. So pre-reduced lunch, and those who qualify for SNAP benefits. So there is a difference in both in the elementary and high school with those numbers. But you know, it should be pretty similar, you would think, because it's the same demographic for the most part. Automatic eligibility does apply between the schools. So one sibling in the elementary, for instance, would automatically qualify the high school sibling, for instance, for a free or reduced lunch. Now, the good news is if you qualify for reduced lunch, that is still going to be free for the '23, '24 school year. So we are just going to do a lot more outreach and encourage folks to go ahead and apply, even if you're not sure. And that's how you can get those rates up. And it's a little bit more than you think.
And you can apply online now.
Yes, and at back-to-school night, we'll have people ready to assist, and you can do it right here on campus, too. So, second stuff.
Thank you.
And there's just some information about the meal payment options. Parents will still need to have an open account for any students if you want them to get extras or ice cream and things like that. But the breakfast and lunch will be free at the elementary. You can set up your account online on the K-12 Payment Center, and that's where you can manage your payments. And if you have multiple children, you can transfer balances and keep up to date on those.
So if it were the case that a lot of high school students who haven't yet filled out these forms and qualified, would it be possible that even this year, we could...
Not for this year, because we'll have to take a snapshot in April.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, that's the next one. Yes, ma'am. Okay, 4.2 is our tabled item from last month. So we do have uploaded those water management plans for your review and approval. And that is just the treatment plan, how our water is maintained at the schools. Every year, we have to have our plan approved and brought to the board. Any questions about those? Moving right along. Leadership Academy, 4.3. We had a very successful leadership academy. The agenda is here, and our theme as an administrative team this year is creating magic on the road to remarkable. That's what we want to do, is dazzle people with the magic of this place. It is an amazing place to work. But to do that, there's a lot of things you have to make sure you're planning for. So a lot of the first day was talking about our planning strategies as an administrative team, how we prioritize our own planning time as an administrator, how you plan out your week, how you build in time for your personal and professional strategic planning as an individual, then as a team leader, and as a building administrator, whatever that is, whatever the case may be. And then we were able to review our comprehensive plan in detail with the data we've accumulated, discuss goal setting for the year, and what the targets are going to be based on the student outcome data, and a whole lot of other data sources that we were able to accumulate. Commit to be fit had some activities for us to wake us up after all that scintillating work. And then we had a great presentation ending day one from Erica Genijohn, our social worker, about mental health and wellbeing. Very informative. And then on day two, we covered more about data and how V-Boss is going to be used and what we can do for mapping out testing strategies, benchmarking, all of those assessment points. And it's really interesting that a lot of the work Karen Ellis did this past year, and a couple of our specialists, Catherine Todd, Bethany Bostick, did a lot of data gathering and used AIMS Web for different assessments, benchmarking, to a point where they can identify students needing additional strategies for remediation very early and directly correlated it at a rate of almost 90%, which that's a lot faster. So for us, that's almost a guarantee that you know to identify which kids are going to need interventions academically and be able to apply them quickly and adapt as necessary. So it's a great tool for us to use, and we have a great handle on the data. So that was awesome for goal setting. And the next piece of that now will be the continuous school improvement plans that both buildings will put together with their teams. And then, of course, our update on the comprehensive plan will happen in November to the board to show you where we are progress-wise. Then we had a discussion right after that about, okay, what are the professional development needs based on what we found out? What does it look like we're going to have to have? There are a lot of new requirements based on Virginia law, in particular, the Virginia Literacy Act being implemented. And I am happy to say that we've started that process already, and we're on the right track with the science of reading and evidence-based practices already. So we are here at a schedule of implementation on the training. I think we finished up our K-3 training with Orin Gilligan and ISME Letters Training, first science of reading, the summer. So we should be all set. And that curriculum will be the same standard universal curriculum for teaching phonics, science of reading, all the way through. Same vocabulary, same methodology, same science background. It's going to be really good, actually. And then the other piece of that will be the templates for developing individualized reading plans for students, not on grade level, reading on grade level at different times, which is why we need those tools to make sure we know exactly where students are achieving in those areas. But our elementary school, our primary, they're doing an outstanding job. Their literacy scores are looking really good. So there's other professional development needs that we're going to have to have. But a big discussion, too, and something that we want to emphasize, is teachers have had a lot thrown at them, a lot, just keeps kind of piling on. So we're really going to try to revert back to basics and kind of ease up on giving teachers way too much and making sure... We're not presuming everyone has all the strategies they need to plan accordingly for remediation and enrichment, chasing and assessing for outcomes, and just making sure that we have all that solid foundation, because there are a lot of things coming down the pipe that are going to require us to make sure we have that. So we're not going to presume anything, try to ease up a little bit on the kind of extra stuff on teachers, and try to ease up and get them back to the expert practitioners that they are, embedded in their content, talking to their colleagues, looking at assessments, looking at data. So that's going to be an emphasis for this year. We top school safety quite a bit. Dr. Bolt is taking over crisis management after retiring from Mr. Mike Tupper. So she's on that, gave a presentation to the group about where we're heading with that and the current status of our crisis management plan. Then we had some robust discussion about attendance, improving attendance outcomes, because that is a big focus, of course, across the state, and we're all sort of on pins and needles on how chronic absenteeism is going to be weighted in the accreditation formula. Last I did hear was that attendance would be more of a workplace readiness indicator than a standalone indicator, maybe. And I agree with that more than having it just as a standalone indicator. So there needs to be a separate indicator for, say, workplace readiness. And so I think that's sort of the way they're leaning, but we won't know until it's all presented and voted on. And then Dr. Johnson led a scintillating discussion on how we investigate different types of incidences, what the protocols are, the use and don'ts, and making sure those are very solid. So we do have investigative processes we have to go through, and confidentiality is a big part of that. And then climate surveys, they weren't available to us at the time of the retreat. Usually, at this retreat, we do go through our climate survey results, but they have been posted and sent to us. And I know in our last Rappahannock Roundtable, they did bring up, I think it was Amy Johnson from the CATH Foundation, noticed that on the climate survey, students reported in Rappahannock at a much higher rate than neighboring districts that they felt like they did have at least one trusted adult to go to, which was a big lagging indicator years ago that we were very concerned with, and since have done a lot of work to make sure we were all mental health first aid trained. So it appears to be working, because that's a big indicator that shifted, and we were far and above that in most of our neighboring counties. So that was a point made from an outside observer right through the survey data. And that was our two days. So it was really an interesting discussion, set us on the right path on the road to remarkable. We're going to create some magic this year by getting back to basics.
So just when I hear that, sort of if I think of myself as an elementary parent, or not anymore, but just like, the basics do include continuing with field trips and things like that.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Basics, you don't even dispensing with the fun things.
Oh, goodness, no. What I mean is, as far as professional wellness, so with ourselves, just making sure we have that solid foundation. The other stuff has to stand on that. So no, enrichment, remediation interventions, all the academies we're working on. So all of those things are key, but we do have to go back to making sure that we are assessing the student outcomes properly, making sure everything is aligned, because there are a lot of changes. So anytime that happens, to avoid a larger implementation dip than you would want to see, you really have to solidify those processes ahead of time, and that will hopefully minimize any implementation dip we'll see with those changes here, changing assessments, accreditation, all those pieces. So we're trying to stay ahead of that to minimize it. We'll see it. Anytime something new is implemented, you're going to see a dip in those outcomes, but they're going to change, and that measuring stick is going to be a little bit different. So we're also going to have to have a really strong communication plan to show you how that's different, how is growth calculated differently, what does this mean? Does it mean we're vastly that different from last year? No, but the metrics is... So all those pieces. So that's what we're saying. No, we're not doing away with all the wonderful things that you're...
Yeah. Get rid of that. No. It's really about understanding the basic level of...
In the profession, making sure we have our basics solid in the profession, it takes to be an expert educator. That's what we mean.
Yeah, I didn't think you meant that, but just listening.
No, great clarification.
I'm on my way to that.
That's what we mean.
We're doing things, and we're keeping all the good things for that.
No, we're just not presuming anything, sort of like a professional tier-one intervention for everybody, ourselves included, just making sure all of those pieces for continuous professional growth are in place, in alignment with what we know is changing, and making sure we're giving the kids the best education that they can have.
Yeah, it's really great to hear with the literacy that we have, that it's been a lot about phonics really being important, and I love seeing hearing that we're getting that already, that re-adoption of those kids. Other people...
Yes.
And it is so important.
Yes.
And those that attended this, when you say leadership academy, it was basically you're building leadership teams?
Yes, building leadership teams, 12-month staff who have instructional focus or administrative duties, yeah, central office, yep.
And it was, and our new assistant principal at the elementary, too?
Yes, she attended.
That was in June?
Yes.
Before the summer time she came.
Yes.
And everybody was there that you expected?
Yes.
There was, what, 10 or 12? How many people were there, actually?
20.
20?
Yes.
Wow, great. So it's good. It's good, because not only do we know the information, we know how broadly it was shared, so it can get out from there.
Everybody gets it at the same time.
The fact that that was... What was the substance of that group? I didn't know.
Can I talk a minute about attendance?
Sure.
There was a really good article in The Post last week, something from the Brooklyn Post, and it would be interesting for me to have you discuss, not tonight, but some other times. There's more to attendance than just being in school.
Yes.
My feeling is that if kids want to be in school, then they will be in school. I mean, they will get there. They'll venture their parents to get there if they really want to be in school. And that's something I think we have to do as a system, is to have that encouraging approach to having kids come to school. Primarily, I think, it probably hits middle and high school better than it does the elementary school, but I think my feeling was always that school was a place that kids wanted to be, that they would be. And since it affects our accreditation, I'm sure there's probably 35 different things that you guys are thinking about doing with that process. So it might be something that I might bring up at the end of board meeting, future board meeting.
That would be a good one, especially when we know better what the state's doing with it.
Right.
Because that might also change our approach to how we tackle this well. But you're exactly right, making the environment as welcoming as possible, affirming and like, the kids know, we want you here, we need you here, you know, and giving them a school that they're proud of. Unless our attendance does look pretty good. So, but there's more we can do, and we do have a tier system for supporting that, but that's a whole nother, you're right, whole presentation in itself, so we would be happy to prepare that for you.
That would be great.
Okay, any questions? Awesome. It was a good day. We had it early in June. We used to do them sort of like in July, in July, but then it only gave you a little bit before school opened up to apply somewhere. So we'd really like to do it earlier, as soon as school lets out, so we can refund everything, look at the data, and then have the summer to work through the issues we have to fight. Out-of-county tuition rate, that has gone up. There is. Okay. So this is a formula we need to use to determine what the out-of-county student tuition needs to be. Basically, you take your total budget, you have to deduct state, federal funds, grant funds, transportation costs, to find what the... And then a local share of what special education costs that you have to cover. Then you get your overall operating funds, your projected ADM, and then you divide that in, and then you get your tuition rate that you charge. So that's the formula we use for policy. So our student tuition rate is $9,876.07, and that's up from...
It was 85, 12.08, so it's an increase of $1,363.99 from last year.
So it is higher. And we have had quite a few now, you remember, this has come up recently, that there were questions about out-of-county non-resident tuition waiver requests. We do have that in place for policy, that if you work in the county, own land, at least 30 hours of some type of service in the county, then you are eligible for a tuition waiver, so long as certain criteria apply. You have to have room in the grade level for which your student is attending. Your student has to be in good standing. And then if there are extra related services for educating your student, then the parent would be responsible. That's uncovered in the regular cost. Parents do have to apply every year for non-resident tuition waivers if they're requesting the waiver. They have to apply, even if they want to pay tuition either way. It's the same process, it's just the waiver itself depends on if they received that. So we have had quite a few requests, in fact.
How many is quite a few?
53.
Oh, right.
All right. So far.
So far, which is much, much higher than we've seen. So that's...
Probably like 20.
Usually, we're about 20-ish, so that's a huge...
People like a personal tuition waiver.
They can. And then there's payment plans we can work out and different things, but the fact of the matter is, we've been talking a lot, a lot about trying to get our enrollment up. ADM, that's our state funding, especially, you know, benchmarking here, they will be looking at that, so it will be very helpful to get that up, as long as we do have room. And our kindergarten class came in much higher than last year, so that's going to help a lot. So we're looking really good for our enrollment numbers for next year.
Is the majority of the 53 primary schools...
I think it's both, right? They're nice even spread, mostly probably elementary, but quite a few at the high school, too.
When you talk about in good standing, that people who come in, how often is that assessed and made?
Every year.
Just annually, is that a quarter?
Annually, yeah. Well, I mean, and if, I have the right as superintendent in this school, if they revoke at any time, yes.
Behavior problem or something?
Yes, ma'am, and that's all laid out in the policy upfront, non-resident tuition. So at any time, you can revoke if your student fails to meet the criteria to stay, yeah.
You give a full refund, right?
Depends on how much the year is like.
Not me, for the ones that have the waiver.
Oh, yeah, sure. Any questions about that?
I think that's wonderful.
Okay, so 4.5 are just our standard, regular annual resolutions we need at the beginning of this...
When you talk about in good standing, that people who come in, how often is that assessment made?
Every year.
Just annually, is that a quarter?
Annually, yeah. Well, I mean, and if, I have the right as superintendent of this school, if they revoke at any time, yes.
Behavior problem or something?
Yes, ma'am, and that's all laid out in the, in the policy upfront, non-resident tuition. So, anytime you can revoke if your student fails to meet the criteria this day, yeah.
You give a full refund, right?
Depends on how much the year is left.
Not me, for the ones that have the wait, look.
Oh, yeah, sure. Any questions about that?
I think it's wonderful.
Okay, so 4.5 are just our standard, regular annual resolutions we need at the beginning of this year in order to make sure our payables go through payroll, our whopping $50 in petty cash we need to have.
You want to increase that?
That's good.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, I think the first time we ever used it, it was like $30 for postage or something that we had to cover, so, I mean, I think it's mine. We have a need, but those are there for your review and your vote. And also, the VSB A made policy updates. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read through all of those revisions, there are many, but nothing hugely significant, I think, given this. For the most part.
I didn't, I didn't see any surprises.
Any questions?
That's it.
All right, well, that completes the superintendent's report.
Thanks very much, Dr. Grimsley. Moving on to reports from headwaters representative.
I didn't get to meet the first item, but we did communicate. And the first item is the summer course and summer drumming happened in June, for the last two weeks of June, and they performed on the stage their own, their own songs that they had written with Ken Alley. And then the drum program did a performance that was directed by Lain Pickers, her retired teacher, that was recently, was off really, and I feel, obviously, on June 30th of the year. The after-school program will start enrollment at the last week of July, and there will be a new enrollment process that will be easier for families to navigate. And it will include an app that parents can download to communicate more easily with the team, even during, during the time of after-school, so it will be, it will be sound convenient. REED is being revamped. The program is hoping to better serve students and teachers that target grades K through three, and the program manager retired, and so right now they're in the process of hiring someone to oversee the program for the next school year, and it should be running up in September or October this year. And the headwaters is working on a new strategic plan and conducting interviews with, with the community stakeholders, and they hope to meet with the school board to discuss the new plan once it's more developed later this fall.
Thank you very much. NBTS?
Yeah, we, they met June 15th, they met here at our elementary school. I was under the COVID time at that point, so I didn't get to it. But it was the organizational meeting, elected a chair, vice chair, yada, yada, yada. The.
Which is Mr. Grove again, his chair, the chair. Yes.
Our site evaluation was exceptional, it was really good, one or two recommendations, but many, many commendations from the site evaluation committee. And we're going to offer environmental science for seniors on the biology science pathway rather than advanced biology, too. That's a, it allows kids to get advanced diploma in both areas. So, that's going to be a new course, starting next year. So, probably where we are.
Yep.
And Dr. Grimsley is the chief superintendent for that operation as well.
Remains the same. We have, we're highly represented.
We're initiative, okay. That's great. Okay, moving on to six top one, we have to select again the SBA delegate and alternate for the delegates session that happens in November. Historically, Mr. Grove and Ms. Meyer have played those two roles, and we just need to make sure that's still a good plan. Is it all good?
We did.
Is it fine?
Yeah.
It's your last chance.
What a shame.
What a shame. All right, if that's, if that's, we should support that, and we have to, we'll have a motion later about that. Great. During our retreat, we discussed board norms and protocols and basic changes, and attached to the, in board docs is the revised version. And so, if you're ever curious about our behavior, this is what we vote on annually to basically agree as a board about the do's and don'ts of being a board member. And, you know, if you find some of them curious, it's good to talk about them, but. Does everybody see the changes that we talked about at the retreat?
Yeah, they're, they're highly.
Document that is now one-year-old. And so, we'll be voting on this as well. Our behavior. Is there any other comments about that? We're going to move on to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Crickets. All right, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the meal pricing as presented this evening?
Certainly.
We have motion, Mr. Oob. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, order, is there a motion to approve the board management plan as presented this evening?
Certainly.
We have a motion responded. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, order, you know what I forgot to ask, is there anybody online?
No, sir.
No, right. Is there a motion to approve the out-of-county tuition rate?
No move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Second from Mr. Oob. Is there any discussion?
It's still a good deal.
It's a good deal, and it is interesting how we are, it seems, becoming a magnet. I think it's exactly what we have hoped. All in favor of the motion, let them say aye.
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, order, is there a motion to approve our annual resolutions? Motion is bottom, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, order, is there a motion to approve the VSB A policy updates for May?
Certainly.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, obviously, am I going to auctioneer school when I retire?
Each, each one of those.
If you want to entertain it, people do it.
There were big piles, but I think.
It was a huge pile and a lot to read, and mostly just chromatical fixes, actually.
Yes.
Board and stuff. All right, is there a motion to approve our VSB A delegate and alternate?
Certainly.
We have a motion from Mr. Oob and a second from, is my, any discussion? Thanks for doing that again. And I think this meeting is actually in person, from my reading.
Yeah, it is. Four o'clock in the afternoon.
Four o'clock, yeah, so you're going to be hanging around late instead of. Last year, you thought you were going, and you found out it was virtual.
Right, I did watch it virtually for three and a half hours.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. So, order, and any motion to approve our board norms and protocols as updated?
No move.
Good motion. Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. It's your analysis, the behavior document. Is there any new business this evening? Actually, I was going to ask, and I don't have a copy of your notes, I'm hoping you might still do. So, down in Richmond, the J-LAR committee reported back to the General Assembly, and, and Dr. Grimsley tuned in to hear that report, and so she was summarizing things eloquently in an email, which I no longer have on this machine. But I don't know, I was wondering if you could just summarize top items from that, the takeaways.
Sure, and what I did was, I sent to our SIB committee, steering committee, the takeaways, because that was a big push for us, and we actually did meet with that group from J-LAR.
Do you want to announce what J-LAR is?
Joint Legislative Advocacy, ooh, something lumpy.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, it's all about, it's the, it's the LCI.
Yes.
The group that looks at the LCI, is it fair? Is it working?
So, this joint legislative committee is commissioned by the General Assembly on different areas to investigate and provide recommendations. This one was commissioned by both the Senate and the House, so it's a very much of interest point for both houses, both chambers, especially with funding being held off. I feel like they knew this was coming, so they were maybe holding off for this, too. And that was, of course, the reason our supplemental basic aid and enactment language was dropped from the Senate Committee because of this report coming out to see if it had any implications. So, the main takeaways that I had from going through the meeting, and the full report is, has been published along with the slides, so those are available online. But basically, the staffing formula using standards of quality, SOQ funding, significantly undercuts what schools need to operate, which we've known for a while. In particular, in small rural districts where the student population is lower than 2,000, there is no mechanism in the standards of quality formula as it stands to provide for economy and scale for smaller districts. So, it's a much higher cost to educate students, especially if you have a higher poverty need, higher distances of students with special education. Special education funding has been lagging for many years in the state funding formula, and that was a major finding as well. So, they really did beat up quite a bit on the K-12 funding formula in many different ways. Support cap, they recommend pulling that off. They also recommended that any school district with under 2,000 do receive an economy of scale adjustment to help with that, so that justifies kind of what we've been saying. The support caps and other caps that were put during the recession should be re-looked at, which is one of ours, which is the enactment language, so that does justify our position on what we have been saying for the supplemental basic aid cap. Let's see, what else did they say? Oh, local composite index. There was a little blurb in their report that said, eh, it seems fair, a little bit, a little more worse. But it was interesting that the adjusted gross income piece, they feel like was adequately captured because they use that as an ability to pay because of the property taxes and other things that may come in based on income. So, that's why, that's an indicator. I think our report kind of shows really the flaw in that mechanism, but they didn't use our piece, you know, the research. That's okay. And the main issue with LCI is if you make even minor changes to that formula, it causes significant issues with funding districts at different levels across the board. So, we kind of knew that, that's why everyone's been shy about touching LCI. But if you revamp the whole staffing formula in certain ways, then you could maybe make some better adjustments. And we're only one of like five states that use a staffing-based funding formula, and it's very complex and causes a lot of inequities, especially if it's not looked at more frequently. J-LAR did say that this is probably a 10-year strategy to uptake.
Ten years.
However, VSB A and VAS did put out a joint statement urging legislators to look at the FY '24 budget, the surplus, because they have not approved the final budget bill, the other skinny budget, to maybe grab some, a little making fruit there and enact some of that, some of the recommendations, particularly the support cap adding for some at-risk populations. I'm hoping COSARS pushes for that, under 2,000, economic scale adjustment. The estimated cost in the J-LAR report for that is about $80 million. Thirty-two districts are less than 2,000 students, which is about 2.5 million of these if they equalize across the board. So, that's pretty significant. So, I'm hoping that might be an easy win for them with the coalition.
So, good for us. The SOQ was a great find for us, the cap's a great find for us, and 10 years. It's hard to tell quickly, we will see that, but both findings are good as far as our.
Yes.
Impact to our.
Very good justification. It's good justification when we go back now to those committees, because we're not going to stop fighting for that supplemental basic aid cap to be removed in that enactment language, but now, we waited for what they wanted. You know, the Senate committee said, well, we want that J-LAR report to kind of shed some more light. Well, there it is. Really does show quite a bit of why we need that removed. So, we'll see.
And just to, just to be clear, the reason SOQ is important to us, General Assembly will say 5% for all staff, and they will give us, as far as our county goes, 70% of whatever it is that was their decision. And we come up with locally 83% of that money, because they only give that raise to the SOQ positions, of which not all, not all of our positions are SOQ positions, but perhaps in the future, they might be.
On everyone.
Right.
Considering you're reading that there's a $2 billion budget, surplus floating around, seems like it would be a logical way to use part of that.
Here's an easy way to get it. I get lots of those suggestions, like Mohammed.
And there's no use on the budget and no idea of timeline yet?
Not really. We had hoped before June 30th, and they had convened that Tuesday before, whatever the date was, and then had some disagreements about what was supposedly promised before and after, so they kind of gave up in the session. So, I know the governor's really pushing to get back together to see if they can do something. And now with this report, I feel like there might be at least more of an emphasis or a focus on K-12. But really, who knows? I don't know.
Right, no, no, I just didn't know if you'd heard anything.
No, sir.
All right, thanks. Any other new business?
Oh, I hope that we'll have pictures of our, of all the new renovations, the high school coming up. It was, and those, I'm, I correct that those renovations are leftover funding from COVID funding that we received some of them, some of them, some is from a grant.
Some is a grant, some has been leftover, extra funds, yes, and then some was that, quite a lot of it was due to that infusion of those one-time, that one-time million dollars in capital.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really well-used, and it's going to make a huge difference to people wanting to be in school. It really is.
Well, to the student.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah, it's going to be exciting, and it would be good to get some pictures out, but they just ready to be taken pictures of.
Yeah, they will. Come soon. The state chair will be ready by the first day of school.
All right, moving on to requests for future agenda items. Please, Mr. Grove, have one.
Yeah, I would like to know, kind of, I think citizens would like to know all the different things. I know people are working on it, that kind of is attracting young people.
And I had mentioned at the last meeting about wanting to have a report of what can the future this episode have.
Yeah, we were going to try to get them on our agenda at some point.
Right, so I'm, I'm meeting with them, they're board next week, later this week, on the 20th. So, when I meet with them, I was going to bring that up to them to see what would work best, because either we could maybe consider a standing agenda item every so often, or even appoint, because we do have monthly memorandum of understanding meetings, MOU meetings, with a couple of members of their board and the executive director myself. And so, it would be fine to appoint a board member from this board there, too, to hear some of those things. I think that, too, it might be a good idea, especially now that they're really taking off in the fourth year.
So, they have new leadership?
Yes.
And it's good just to say, just to talk about those kinds of ideas with them and see what they, they bring back, just to keep it on the radar.
Absolutely.
They can certainly come speak to us anytime, but we need something probably predictable.
It would be good to have it as a regular thing, especially being headwaters representative, and I'm happy that we're in touch all the time, but primary features wouldn't exist without our county publics as well, it seems like we should figure out how we're, you know, we're treating them similarly, you know, in terms of.
Well, we do have lots of our.
Right. In terms of our knowledge, because obviously, we're the, we're the public's representatives, so we should, we should be up to date on what's going on.
Sure.
And I think it's a great, I'm not saying it's not a, I think it's a very good purpose. We should, we should, we should all know what's here.
And so, we'll start off with your conversation with them, and we'll try to figure out how to get them here when they're ready, and discuss the next steps.
Yeah, sure.
As far as how we're going to close that gap.
I'd like to give a shout-out to Grab News, because I think they're starting to throw some information our way, and we're throwing information their way. It, it sounds like we're developing a partnership that's going to be beneficial for people, for, for everybody. The article on the summer program was excellent this week.
All right, is there any other future agenda items? Moving on to the next regularly scheduled school board meeting. It says here in the board docs, August the 8th to 6:30 in the high school band room. I'm not sure that's right.
No, sorry.
Is it going to be back in here, do you think? Back in this room?
Auditorium, yes.
Okay, so we'll change that to the auditorium. And, and just so you know, that's the day before the first day of school. So the first day of school will be the very next day after the school board meeting, August the 9th. Our teachers, of course, the new teachers show up August the 1st. The first day for all teachers is August the 2nd, a Wednesday. So things are, their summer is wrapping up quickly.
Yep.
And it's almost time to kick it back.
We'll give a schedule on opening week.
Yes, we're mailing out everything. You should be hearing the promise at the end of this week.
All right, we have a motion, we have a close section.
With the board convening a closed session for the public purpose discussion, considering the appointment of staff for professional positions, class-wide positions, coaching positions, and resignation of professional positions pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Oop. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, post no. This order, we're going to move to the conference room, and we're going to be back in 10 or 15 minutes, if you want to hang out. And if not, you can, you can ask at another time, or we can send an email about what happens when we go back. Basically, we'll be voting on the personnel report and adjournments when we get back, if you want to hang out.